Good morning, everybody. We're about to get ready for our council meeting on this morning. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate positions, excuse me. Also, please be advised our city council meetings broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ms. Ivana Nelson for the role call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Avery.
Here.
President Back is absent today and our meeting is being chaired by President Pro Tim, Councilwoman Smith. Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you today first saying thank you. Thank you for the opportunity of life, health, and strength. Thank you for the opportunity to serve and do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. We pray now for your guidance, your instruction, Lord God, that we would make the best decisions possible for our city. We continue to lift our merit before you, our city council, and all that work to make this city a great city. We thank you for what you have done, for what you're doing, and those things that you are going to do. We have your faith to call those things that be not as though they were. We pray this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meetings held on May 28th, the Community Development Committee meeting held on May 30th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
So moved.
I'm sorry.
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of May 24th to the 30th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is reserved for proclamation accommodations for Mayor Ford. We'd like to recognize our school superintendent, Mr. Blackwell, who's here today. It's always a pleasure to have him in our city council meetings, as well as board members. Thank you for being here today. Item eight is reserved for unfinished business. We have none today. Item nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving alcohol beverage license. Backpack Brands LLC doing business as game day. Fresh Grio has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. The location is 1001 Rainbow Drive, Suite D1 in District 4, which is at the Gaston Mall. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of?
I'm Tim Bowman. I'll be the managing partner with Backpack Brands, and we just appreciate the opportunity to come back into Gaston and open this business. There's three of us involved that all graduated together in 1984 and have chosen Gaston as where we would like to kick off our business and get started. We're trying to grow a brand that will be multi-locations in multiple cities, and Gaston is our home, and this is where we want to start. So we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Shall we entertain a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution appointing members to the Forest Cemetery Board. This appoints Julie Payne to replace Ben Reed for term expiring April 5th, 2027. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing agreement with B. Craig Lipscomb Architect LLC. This is to provide plans and specifications to construct a new storage shop building for the facilities maintenance department, and the amount is $24,150. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is reserved for new business. I think we have a couple of those today.
Yes, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I was getting a message. I have two items here. The first one is a resolution appointing members to the Gaston Arts Council. This would appoint Tony Gredick for a four-year term, Jill Edwards for a two-year term, Billy Jenkins for a two-year term, Angie Campbell for a two-year term, Ms. Nanda Patel for a four-year term, Sarah Cusamano Miles for a three-year term, Chris Coteau for a three-year term, and it would also appoint the following non-voting members, Ray Wettzel and Tom Banks, and it would appoint as Secretary Ms. Brittany Perkins. This is the inaugural Gaston Arts Council appointees from the mayor's office. So if there's no objections, I'd like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Okay, Mr. President, I have one more, and this is a document from the legal department authorizing an agreement with Turnback, Warren, Rice, Frederick &amp; Smith, PC, to resolve a contract dispute with the University of Alabama. It's my understanding this pertains to a legacy lease that was in place for years concerning the building across the street from us here on Broad Street, and I think they're attempting to renegotiate the lease, and there's some technical issues that require some legal assistance. So this would authorize us to use outside counsel to negotiate this and get it to the finish line. So given that time is of the essence, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Item 13 is reserved for department reports, committees, boards, et cetera. I know we have Mr. Craig Scott today with Together We Read program, along with Superintendent Keith Blackwell and Ms. Heather Rickles-Turk.
Mr. President, council members, mayor, I'm Craig Scott, Director of the Gaston Public Library. You've heard me say before that during our summer months when the students are out, we pride ourselves and must keep reading levels up. So at the libraries, libraries across the country, we all focus on summer reading programs. This Friday, the library, the main library downtown here will be having our kickoff party at 10:00 a.m. But I'm here really to talk about a new program that the Gaston City Schools will be doing for summer reading as well, and I'll let Superintendent talk about that.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I've given you all t-shirts that, and once again, those sizes were based off what this gentleman told me your sizes were. So if anything is wrong, which I know we got a couple, we got to get fixed, but we'll get that. Yes, reading, y'all heard me before talk about how important reading is for our young students, especially the K through 3. It's very, very, you know, I can't emphasize it enough because when they get on level reading young, it carries over to middle school, to high school. So we have to emphasize that across the city. It's not just a school system thing, it's a at-home thing, it's a business, it's whatever it can be for young children to be involved with reading, reading with their families, reading with a next-door neighbor, reading at their churches, reading, just reading, reading, reading. Now, we just finished the ACAP, everyone's aware of you, I'm sure you've heard the literacy, the Alabama literacy, so we had 92% of our third graders passed that, which is above the state average, so we're very pleased with that. The other 8%, a lot of those kids can move on because of exemptions, good clause exemptions, whether it be learning disabilities, whether it be EL students who have only been in the country for less than three years, so there's exemptions for those children as well. So we've got to continue to push reading. So I got with Heather Rickles, Venture Marketing, just talking about what we can do to campaign to push reading across the city. And I need you as council, you know, as city council members, to push this in your districts. I need, we need your help. We can't do this alone. You know, we do what we do, but we need it beyond the 3 o'clock and the 3:30 and the after-school programs. It needs to be something just across the city. So I'm going to let Heather explain the program Together We Read. And I also brought up Ms. Rita Smith because she was here, and we're going to bring one of our board members up as well. So yeah, she's going to stand here with us. All right, I'm going to let Heather explain the program.
Hello there, I'm Heather Tur. So what Ms...
I'm sorry.
Oh, Rickles-Turk, okay. So Mr. Blackwell came to us with the idea of how can we get families reading together over the summer? What kind of promotion can we put together? So we come up, came up with a campaign called GCS Together We Read. And if you go to Facebook and you type in GCS Together We Read, it'll pull up and you can see it there. And the challenge we're giving families is to post a picture of yourself reading with a Gaston City student. And by doing so, not only will you be encouraging your friends and your followers on Facebook to do the same and to be reading with their families, you have a chance to win a ton of prizes this summer. So we kicked it off mid-May at a lot of the end-of-the-year programs at the different schools, and we've already had like 25 families posting. And so we're reposting those pictures at GCS Together We Read. We're also posting statistics on why you should be reading with your child, and we're also posting book recommendations from the librarians at the Gaston Public Library. So the Gaston Public Library has been a fantastic partner with us on this. The prizes that we're giving away are all at the library, so when we announce on social media that someone's won a prize, they pick it up at the library. So we're also helping getting more people to the library that way. And they have a special section at the library that's dedicated to the Together We Read campaign. Success by Six has donated 450 books for the school system to give out to students over the summer, and Spectrum Media has given us $1,000 a month in TV spots, encouraging people to be reading with their, with their children. So let me tell you what the prizes are, and then I'll tell you how you guys can possibly help us. Some of the prizes are the t-shirts, we're giving away a ton of those. We have McWayne Center passes, we've already given away tickets to a baron's game to one child, passes to the factory from Beth Ann Mashburn, we've got Imagination Place passes, passes to the alley, Nakalula Falls passes, Birmingham Zoo passes, and 50 Buffalo Wild Wings Kids' Meals for free. And so, so far, all 25 families that have posted have gotten some sort of prize, so we're giving them out like crazy. So how you can help, three different ways. Any way that you guys can encourage city employees to participate, help us kind of really get the momentum going through whatever your communication newsletter, if you could encourage the employees. I know the police chief has a daughter. What grade is she in?
Seven.
Seven. So she still, she could still participate, that would be great. Any age can, like Mr. Blackwell said, we're kind of focusing on the young ones, but anybody that posts can win a prize. So encouraging employees, promoting through your social medias, if you could help us promote this, that would be wonderful. And then if each of you could post with your child, your grandchild, your neighbor, and encourage your friends and families to kind of get on board, all three of those things would be a huge help. Y'all have any questions?
Anybody?
Okay, good. We have some flyers. Okay, and I'll leave some, I have some here if any of you want them as well. Anything else?
No questions.
Awesome program.
Yes, absolutely.
It's exciting.
Sounds like a really good incentive to get the family and the kids involved.
Yes.
And thank you, Mr. Blackwell, on the scores, different schools are hearing good reports about the schools and the children reading on a higher grade level, so that's always encouraging here. Thank you as well.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Could I hear from Ms. Rita?
It's upon a privilege, yes. I would like for her to say something too, Mayor Ford.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Craig Ford, for this opportunity, to the council, thank y'all for this opportunity. I would just like to commend Superintendent Blackwell and Assistant Superintendent Ms. Menes and the great job that many of them are doing in the city with our children. We're ecstatic about the scores this year from the ACAP, and I know as we collaborate together as a community and with, we have Vacation Bible School coming up for the first time in our ministry, so we're going to initiate reading through that. And so I just thank the city how they have supported us, and just thank y'all for all you do, and let's get our children on the level they need to be on in reading. God bless.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
She mentioned...
Thank you again, Ms. Smith. Appreciate it.
She said you're welcome. She mentioned camp, just so you'll know, we have our summer camps going on there at two locations. You have Floyd and Stripland, four elementary schools are within each of those two locations because our elementary principals wanted to consolidate some of the resources they have in the two locations instead of spread out across the city. We also just started yesterday our EL camp for our, a lot of our non-English speaking students, and that's at Adams. That'll be going on for four weeks, that's Monday through Thursday, but all three of those are Monday through Thursday. We just had a career tech camp for middle school students, it was last week, at the high school, and we also have some of our EL students at the high school also going through a camp this week. So we have a lot going on for the month of June, so if you're out and about, want to stop by one of those places, feel free to stop by, say hello, just kind of see what's going on. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Blackwell, as well as Mr. Scott. All right. Item 14 is reserved...
Well, I think...
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
While you're coming up, Janet, I just want to say, on behalf of President Pro Tim Smith, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson, appreciate it.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for letting me come in. So just want to give you guys an update from the AMP. We have several great, great events coming up. Everyone's been asking about the farmer's market. Well, like we say, with happiness comes good food, and good food has arrived. We will open farmer's market this Friday at Fifth Street Market, 7:00 a.m. until noon. We have tons of great vendors here, and just to kind of give you a little bit of information, our farmer's market is actually certified through the state. We are a state-certified farmer's market, and that means that we actually go out to these farms, make sure that they're growing what they say they're growing. If they say they have local honey, we make sure everything is just on the up and up. So we are happy to say that we are certified through that, through the state of agriculture. We're going to have all kind of great fresh vegetables. There's green tomatoes, there's cabbage, squash, cucumbers, onions, zucchini, peaches, beets, kale, eggs. We've got a vendor coming in that will have beef. We've got Alabama shrimp, Gulf shrimp coming. They've gotten it right from the Gulf, and they bring it, it's frozen, fresh shrimp right here from Alabama. So lots of great vendors. It's also National Donut Day on Friday, so we will have its donut time there, as well as coffee vendors and a couple of craft vendors. So if you love fresh fruits and vegetables, all of that great stuff, please come shop with us at Fifth Street Market. In addition to that, with us being certified through the state agriculture, we also work with the Extension Office. It's the SNAP Ed, Etowah County Extension System, and they are funded through Alabama A&amp;M and Auburn University. They came to us and said that they were able to get a grant for a mobile garden. And honestly, I wasn't sure exactly what that was, but after learning what it was, is they take a community and they will come set up a garden. Our employees will help keep that garden up, and the people in that community, if they're senior-related, can come in and actually get these vegetables for free. We have got the garden set up, it's going to be in the Carver community, and those people who live in that neighborhood will be able to come, pick some fresh vegetables, and take those home at no charge. So we are excited to be able to partner with them under this grant and offer that to our community. Next thing we have coming up, of course, this Friday, we have our summer concert series. It's back. Gates will open at 8:00, and the concert will start at 9:00. We have a Motown funk and soul band, they're called Fuego. They are from Mobile area, and they are phenomenal, and their slogan is they're going to leave some flames on the dance floor. So we invite everyone to come out, it's going to be a great time. It is no charge to get in, but we need to remind everybody, coolers will no longer be allowed at the AMP, so you got to leave those at home. We will be offering beverages there to purchase, adult beverages there for purchase. So 9:00, bring your friends, your family, free to come in, and you'll also be able to purchase beverages at that point, once you get in there. Another thing that we have coming up, and tickets will be going on sale, is our Dreamers in the Round. That is going to be a concert singer-songwriter. It's the story behind the song, is what they call it, and it is with Keith Burns, who was with Trick Pony, who has written with Brad Paisley, Joe Diffie, Hootie and the Blowfish, and he is bringing along some friends, Will Nance, he's wrote for George Strait, Brad Paisley, Joe Nichols, Tracy Lawrence, you've got Karen Stanley, she's wrote for Patty Lovelace and Faith Hill, and a couple of others. So look for those tickets to go on sale, it's going to be July 18th. Tickets are going to run anywhere from $20 to $30. $30, you'll get VIP and get to meet and greet with these great writers. So it's a lot of things that we have going on, so thank you for letting me come and share. If anybody has any questions.
There's a lot going on in the City of Gaston, so thank you, thank you. Keep all those announcements in mind. The next item is reserved for remarks by mayor and council, and we'll start with Mayor Ford. Do you have any updates on the river rental compared to last week, if you do?
We got some duck boats that were...
Okay.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. We named one, Councilman Wilson.
Okay.
Hey, speaking of the duck boats, we've had over 100 rentals, so it's, I don't know what's going on. People like riding paddle boats, and we're excited about it. So we want to thank the employees of Parks and Rec and the bait shack for what they're doing. One thing is, speaking of the bait shack, we're still waiting on our last FERC permit to be able to put the gas pump out at the bait shack, so we're close to having that completed. I want to mention that please don't forget, this weekend is when we did away with what you could put on the side of the road, household appliances and et cetera. We agreed in honoring our word of having Free Dumpster Day for the second time. It's going to be this Saturday, June 8th, from 10:00 to 2:00. This is for anything, large household items, mattresses, refrigerators, stoves, et cetera. You have to take it to these sites. The sites will be West Megan Sports Complex, corner of Riley Street and Rainbow Drive, which is in the Clubview area, East Gaston Community Center, corner of Nakalula Road and Nakalula Drive, and Midtown Center at North Third Street where Cash Saver is located. All that information's on our website and on all our social media pages, so please, this is your opportunity not to receive a citation and put it on the curb, it's your opportunity to bring it to one of these sites. There is no charge, you just take it, we'll help you throw it off, and we'll pick it up, put it in the dumpster. So there's no charge. I want to say something about the airport, Anthony Tarver, many of y'all know Mr. Anthony. He completed the runway seal coat project at the airport. If you hadn't seen that, it's on our social media site. It's 95% completed, that was funded by FAA and ALDOT grants, and Anthony held the feet to the fire of everybody, making sure it's done right. If you have not seen those pictures on social media, please look at them, it's beautiful. We've had a lot of pilots talk about our airport lately. They're about to do similar work on the apron and the taxi lane too, all funded by ALDOT grants. Today, we have a groundbreaking at 1:00 p.m. for the Nakalula Fire Station and the police substation. It's still on, there is no rain coming, knock on wood. That's why I'll excuse myself after my comments, Mr. President, because we're going up there to get ready for it. Thursday, June 6th, we're having the ribbon cutting for the Senior Wellness Center, formerly known as Elliot Community Center. We're looking forward to serving our seniors in that, in that community. We have the Alabama Community College System, and the council, Ms. Ivana, will be sending stuff out to disseminate to the council members. We'd like everybody present. We'll be cutting a ribbon on the new advanced manufacturing center, and also there'll be a reception on Broad Street Bridge. Every junior college president in the state of Alabama will be present here in Gaston, Alabama, and we are the hosts with the president of the Gaston State Community College, Dr. Kathy Murphy. She has done an excellent job, it's a lot to be said about her and what they're doing to be able to get Jimmy Baker, Dr. Baker, to come up here and want to bring every president to show off Gaston State and the city of Gaston. So we're hopefully rolling out the red carpet for them, they'll be playing golf at Twin Bridges, they'll be riding the train at the Falls, and we'll be having a reception on Broad Street Bridge, and they'll be having something at the venue. The next thing I want to say today, this morning, I went by Carver Community Center, they had probably 40, 45 kids there already. Those employees over there are fantastic, that's the cleanest place I think I've ever been in, and when I walked in, it smelled like pine sawl in every room. But the workers over there do a great job, and the teachers, some of the teachers are regular school teachers that are volunteering their time and getting paid minimal amount to work with these children, and it's just amazing to see how many children we got over there, and she was actually greeting to them when I came in. I want to say something about Dr. Blackwell, Keith Blackwell, that's Dr. Moore, my bad. But the Instagram videos that I've been watching, man, those are fantastic. I've just been watching them, and I'm trying to comment on them every time and share them as much as possible, but I think that's a great way to get our message out about our school system, so I just want, I know Heather's probably got something to do with that, but it's, I'm impressed, I love it, I love seeing our people brag about our school system, so I just wanted to say thanks to him for being here too. So, Mr. President, if you don't mind, we're going to excuse ourselves to go to that ribbon cutting.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Thank you. Next we have District 1, Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith. First thing I want to do is, June 7th, this coming Friday, CDP 2000 will sponsor a Community Empowerment Day, and we know that they rescheduled this because of the rain. Everyone is welcome to come and receive services. They'll have information as it relates to voter registration, voter rights restoration, there will be an attorney on site there. There's also a blood drive going on where you can give blood, there'll be giveaways. The state-free voter photo ID mobile will be there as well, so if you need a state ID, this would be a good time to get that. There'll be health screenings, the fire department will be there with the truck for children, there'll be games and bouncers, rock climbing wall, and it's also, it will be live broadcast. Lunch will be fish, chicken wings, juice, hamburgers, hot dogs, fries, juice, and water. This is at New Liberty Parking Lot. The address is 924 East Broad Street, that's in East Gaston, and the time is from 11:00 until 5:00. And it says bring your own long chair, and I'm sure they have music and all of that, but that's some of the things that will be going on there, and that's this coming Friday. I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Blackwell, for the t-shirt, and thank you for everything that you all are doing as it relates to our school, our children, meeting the goals of reading and math and all, but next time we have to get better advice or sizes from...
Mr. Moore.
Other than that, and so that I will be in all... And so that I will be in order as the rest of the council. Let me say thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Councilwoman Latham. District 3, Councilman Larry Avery.
Mr. President, to ditto on those that have come and presented before us today, thank you for all that you do and continuous efforts as it relates to our children's education and those important issues as it relates to our communities. Want to thank the, the gentleman that came out and did the football camp at Gaston City, all those that came out to Gaston City Football Stadium. It's a great turnout from my understanding, a lot of returning college, well, Gaston City graduates that are in college now, and those that have went on even to the professional level, as some of them came back. So, it's great to know that this program is producing athletes and scholars and things of that nature that are returning home, and then also implementing things into our youth that are growing up, coming out of Gaston City, that give them encouragement to further their education, their careers, and things of that nature. So, thank all of those that played a part in that and that came back. Want to give a big shout out to the Dance Conservatory here downtown Gaston and our Cultural Arts Center, those that play a part there. One of their members was, or still is, if I'm not mistaken, is a part of the Miss Alabama Teen USA, and I think the voting is still going on. You can kind of, at this point, to alleviate messing up, just Google it, Miss Alabama Teen USA, and then it should take you to the site to where that you can vote. And she is a member of that Downtown Dance Conservatory, but she's also a resident of Gaston, Alabama. Also, want to give a big shout out to Demaya Taylor, who is our national Miss Juneteenth as we are in June. She is our national Miss Juneteenth USA, resident of Gaston, who we have had two that have went and giving their time and their talents in this pageant and this scholarship and all that it, that comes with it. And that's Ms. Ace Spade, who was the same position in 2022. So, Gaston has represented in 2022 and 2024. She'll be going up to the White House on the White, White House lawn as they commemorate this, this day of Juneteenth and celebrating. That was, bear with me here. Juneteenth Festival, Omar Cunningham performing live Saturday, June 15th. Doors open at 1:00 p.m. Free event at the AMP, the Amphitheater 90 Wall Street, Gaston, Alabama. It's a family reunion, family affair. Kids are welcome as well. So, just put a, put a pin in that date, time. Someone had asked when Omar is coming up. I'm not sure just yet, but when I get that time, I'll, I'll, I'll post it. We're looking also to have Ms. Demaya Taylor and all those other candidates as it relates to the next coming up Juneteenth pageant to be present, and then possibly the director, the state director of Juneteenth as it relates to the association will be coming as also, hopefully. Saturday, June 8th, which is this Saturday, there is a sixth annual Block Fest Car and Bike Show that'll be held at our Gaston Industrial Park. A fun event. Had an opportunity to witness before with, for those that know, rapper Rick Ross had a huge car show this past weekend in Atlanta at his Fayetteville property, and some of those same guys that was there, which are, a lot of money being put into these vehicles, lot of old-school vehicles that are restored. And so, we're bringing in a lot of money into Gaston this weekend as it relates to cars, bikes, and vehicles, other type of vehicles, but people that are coming in that will be stopping at our hotels, our restaurants, shopping locally, as well as hopefully going and visit some of our car lots and, you know, maybe purchasing, doing some purchasing there. But again, just bringing in a lot of people from around us statewide, as well as municipality-wide, that is coming to this event, looking, I think, there are 40 trophies that'll be held, handed out, cash prizes for the best show, cash prizes for the best car, and then other events along with the car fest will be, Block Fest will be going on also. Banquet 2024, Community Celebration of the End of Slavery, June 21st, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. Annie Yacht Family Life Success Center, East Gaston. The benefits for this banquet will go to the Gaston City Schools Ignite Program. And again, that's on June 21st at 6:00 p.m. In my final comments, I would like to thank the NLC, the National League of Cities, for my appointment to lead the National League of Cities Small Cities Council. I was appointed, I guess, a week or two ago, whenever it was, and so, I'll actually have to present a video for our conference coming up in California as it relates to the local municipality Gaston, what we are doing. And so, as I'm excited to do that, I'm also equally excited to work with other municipalities all across, not only the state of Alabama, but nationally as it relates to the, the transitioning of some things that's going on in our cities. So, again, I want to thank the board, the president-elect David Sander of Rancho Cudorva, and all of those members that played a part in how somehow and why they nominated me, but I'm taking the privilege and honor to accept it and take the opportunity to learn, as well as to implement those things that they saw in me from, I guess, our national conference as, to, to be able to exist and, and learn, as well as hopefully to bring some things here home to help our local community as well. Thank you. That's the end of my comments.
Congratulations. Thank you, Councilman Avery. District 5, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to Superintendent Blackwell for all you do. I know that's not always a job that you get a lot of recognition for, but I know you and your faculty over there work very hard, and it doesn't go unnoticed by this group, at least. Speaking of faculty, when we talk about the 100 paddle boat rentals over the last two weeks, I want to say thank you to the 92 city employees that were forced to rent paddle boats over the last two weeks. Also, now that school is out, I want you guys who live in densely populated neighborhoods, areas, keep in mind, lock your doors on your car. If you're parking in the driveway, if you're parking on the street, it's no secret, kids are out of school, they don't have anything to do. Sometimes they make bad decisions and start roaming the neighborhoods, you know, digging through cars. So, please just take every precaution and don't ever, ever, ever leave a weapon in your car unlocked or unattended. Lock your door up, take your valuables inside. It's usually just a prank nine times out of 10, but keep that in mind as we move into the summer months. Finally, I know y'all are probably sick of hearing me talk about this because I've talked about it for the last three weeks, but congratulations to Auburn University for winning the men's golf national championship last week. That is, I know it seems like something that's silly, but seriously, I want to read a little bit about this incredible accomplishment. Not only is it Auburn's first national championship in men's golf, but there is a very special freshman that is part of this golf team. His name's Jackson Coivin, okay? I just want to read this to you. He is the first player in the history of the sport to win all four Player of the Year awards in his freshman year. The only player in any, of any level of undergraduate to ever win all four Player of the Year awards. He won the Haskins Award, the Ben Hogan Award, the Jack Nicklaus Award, and the Phil Mickelson Award. He's the only golfer to ever do that, okay? He played in 13 tournaments in 2024. He finished in the top 10 12 times and only finished outside of the top six one time. Nobody's ever done that. He smashed the Auburn record for lowest average scoring. He had the single-season record for top 10 finishes, rounds below par. He had 28 rounds below par. He shot 176 birdies in 13 tournaments, okay? No one's ever done anything like this before. He was the SEC Individual Golf Champion. He finished second as the National Individual Golf Champion, and Auburn won the SEC Tournament and the NCAA Tournament National Championship. This kid is 19 years old. He has exemptions now to five PGA Tour events next year as a 19-year-old kid. So, congratulations to Auburn. We may not be winning football championships right now, but at least when we win a championship, we do it the right way. War Eagle. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. I know if President Black was here, he would say War Eagle.
That's right. If he were.
Yeah.
If he were.
District 6, Councilwoman Manatra.
Yes, I just want to follow up on the mayor's advertising our Free Dumpster Day on Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, and he did give all five locations, and those are on our website. But I did want to mention the fact that there are some items that we will not collect that day, and those are household garbage, tires, batteries, paint cans, and any electronics. So, I don't want you to be disappointed when you're bringing all your stuff on Saturday, but we're excited to offer that free day, and there, there will be coordination that we will try to get these done every quarter. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. District 7, Councilman Robinson.
I've got to say something.
I've got to say something.
Remember the dumpster day definitely on, on Saturday. And District 7, you'll be at Nakalula Falls in the parking lot there. I caught that there at the end. We don't win football championships, but at least when we do win a championship, we do it the right way. I don't know really what, what that was going for there, but congratulations with that. War Eagle and all that stuff.
I got a feeling you're going to know exactly what I'm talking about over the next three or four years.
Thanks, Superintendent Blackwell. I'll repeat everybody what they said. Thank you, Groudey. Mr. Scott, Mr. Rickles, thank y'all for the reading programs. Summer reading programs is a good idea. The prizes in the, in the social media, we'll put, put that out there. What else did I need to say? Oh, we have, I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking this afternoon at 1:00 at Nakalula Falls Fire Station. That's, it's a big one on my list. That's the, one of the starts to making the, the corridor look like it needs to look, like a little small Gatlinburg or a small Mentone, because that, Firehouse will have like a log facade, and so, they'll start the, the projector towards that. Barbarian Challenge next weekend at Nakalula Falls. That's going to be a fun event. We also, on Friday night, we have a rock, actually not a rock, a rope climbing event. They're actually going to be climbing from out of the gorge, I learned yesterday. That's going to be really neat. I think that starts at 9:00 p.m. I'll get, I'll have more information on that next Tuesday, but that's going to be a fun event. It's open for spectators. There's going to be food trucks up there. I think there's going to be a beverage truck up there. We can watch from the other side, the campground side, and watch these crazy folks climb ropes. I think that'll be it. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for your remarks earlier. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Go ahead.
It's my mom's birthday tomorrow. Happy birthday, Mom.
That's right. Got to do that. Got to do that. Just want to thank Mayor Ford, his leadership, the staff, all the department heads for all that you do. We certainly couldn't do what we do without you. You make this thing go. So, we definitely want to give you a shout out. Also, the city council, we appreciate everyone here. As y'all can tell, we have a good cohesion, chemistry, working together, handling the city business, but we laugh a lot and have a good time. So, we certainly thank God for all of you all being here on today. So, there's no other further comments. Again, I don't know if I recognize Ms. Smith. Thank you so much for being here today. There's no further comments. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.